We have with us tonight Mr. Darkante. Thank you, and I love that applause when I'm going to ask my congratulations if we hold it until the very, very end. So next to Mr. Darkante is Ms. McCarthy. We also have next to her Dr. Holson. Next to him is Mr. Cirillo. To his right is Mr. Sinatus. To his right is Mr. Schwartzbaum. And to his right is Dr. Kafani. Join me in welcoming them. Our moderator for this evening is going to be Joanne Duncan, and I'm inviting her now to the podium to go over the problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a few housekeeping rules before we begin tonight. First and foremost, let's make sure ourselves are on mute, not free. Thank you. As you've mentioned, no yelling this evening, no breathing, no heckling, no hand clapping. Please preserve that for the end. But one thing you can do tonight is you will need two some hands, and they are some hands. Go right through the door here. The ladies room and the men's room is right behind this wall. If you have just entered the gym and you would like to write down a question for the candidates, please, there's a lady in the back with the red jacket on, sorry. She's raising her hand. Please see her for a card, and she'll give you a card to write your question down. She will take your questions when you finish. Okay, so next, we will start our evening's vote and start with Mr. Darkante. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So first, I'd like to just quickly thank organizations that have put this debate together. I know this is the second time they've done it, so it's been an awful lot of work, and just thank you. Very much appreciate it. Also, there's just been a couple of people in the crowd that I recognize they did shelter the debate last week, and really appreciate you taking the time to come back out and take the time to support us. So again, I'm Chris Darkante, and I'm running for town council because West Orange spends way too much money. We have record debt at $71 million. We have the highest income tax ratio as a county, seven highest in New Jersey. And right now, it doesn't appear we have any legitimate checking balances on spending between the mayor's office and the center of town. And I think it's about time we all had a voice and have a town spend its own money. So what do we think of all of that? I have an undergraduate degree in athletics. I got my MBA from Ford Graduate School of Business. If you can't tell yet, I'm not a graduate politician. I've worked in investment banking, private banking since 1998. Currently serve as a chief operating officer. I manage a $17 million budget. I manage global staffing. I manage vendors, vendors contracts. And this is what I do day to day, how I deal with my family. And these are the sort of private sector expertise that I think we need on the council if we want to start to turn this shit around. So my platform is pretty simple: smart spending. We just need to do a couple of things. I think we need to reject all the wasteful spending that we really just can't afford anymore. I think we need to reject any contracts that aren't put out for the management. Or that don't have some sort of cap that we don't get, totally pulling out of one of the chains. Typically, we see a certain expense, and when we think, "put it here for something," it just goes up and down. But also, and sometimes more than, we still have to continue to invest in the town. We need to make sure that we fund items and ideas that are going to raise property values, that are going to make the town more safe. And we need to also find ideas where it's going to drive business investment to the town. So I think if we have very good discipline and follow methodology, we have the opportunity to make West Orange more affordable with lesser taxes, without cutting off our critical services, and we will definitely.
Just quickly, we just hope to remind the candidates about the timing. So right here in front, you have three minutes. When you are down to one minute, you can see the yellow hand go up over here. And when it's time to close out, it's the race. Okay, thank you.
It's good evening, everyone, for coming out. My name is Susan McCarthy. I would like to start with a thank you to Red Bull and the members of West Orange African Heritage Organization for moving this forum forward. I want to start by saying the only reason I initially ran for council is because my graduate thesis was published in the childhood education, educational theories, and I wanted to put those theories to practice and establish a school, first now in preschool. What I found, when I opened that school, was that I learned lesson in education versus municipal almost. I was coming out of administrative education, and I found that the employees in the town were so knowledgeable but not very helpful. I immediately, when I opened the school, established the school Pleasant Valley Way, Congregation Cora Tora. I immediately became a member of the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. And I thought that by being a member of the chain, I would help other business owners and smooth the path to a striking business here in West Orange. Sixty families that wanted to register for my school came to the planning board meeting when we tried to establish the school. And those sixty families really was the start of my motivation to even run for council. Because when we bought our home, my husband Joe, we married forty years on December 1st. When we bought our home thirty-three years ago in the greater area, there was a playground right next to Roosevelt Elementary School at the corner of Public Hill Road, broken flats, fences, dilapidated equipment, fences that served no purpose. It was a mess for the community. I met, I assembled parents in the area, and I met the recreation director to look for funding to replace that. It was the story of the neighborhood watch group that we didn't even know were part of the neighborhood watch group, and it gave me the motivation to continue to work with departments. And all the years that I have served on the council, I have an interesting working relationship with the departments here in the town. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Holson, and I want to thank the African Heritage Organization, Washington Street School, my fellow candidates, and all of you for coming out tonight to listen to each one of us. And I especially want to applaud and appreciate the organizers of this event, who, because of their sensitivity to religious and cultural diversity, moved this event from last week to tonight, and I thank you for the new event. It's not coincidental that I'm here at the big forum for candidates for town council, because if you just walk across the street into the municipal parking lot and go to 19 Clink Street, that's where I spent my early childhood. And it was in Torrey Corner that I really learned the life and the culture and the climate of West Orange. I remember Pizano Shoe Repair Shop and the butcher shop where we used to get the long meat sliced and given to us for free each and every day when my mother brought us there. We learned that the downtown section of West Orange was a special place where culture and small business and people assemble and socialize. And then, of course, just three blocks away from us is our signature national and international site called the Edison Complex. And so I grew up in the midst of a town that was rich in all the things that made this town so great. Around the age of five, my family moved to the top of Second Hill. And it was there that I began to really learn what West Orange is about. And I consider West Orange the town of inventors and mentors. And perhaps if we look at those two terms inventor and mentor, we can get an idea of how West Orange formed me into the person I am today. At St. Joseph's School in West Orange, where a parish priest not only engendered me the love of sports and of religion, but also of the cultures and the arts. When I appeared on the stage at Merck Symphony Hall in the sixth grade in the October carnival, or in the eighth grade when I was a lead performer in a production of Peter Pan, the scene of Hallie Ursin's radio station. I went to Antares Catholic, where fortunately the education I received there helped me to win in 1970 the most outstanding senior award among 596 senior boys. So West Orange has formed me, but perhaps the most formative place has been the Merklin tract, our neighborhood, Mars Road, where neighbors shovels snow for neighbor and mowed grass for neighbor. So I'm here tonight to introduce myself, to thank you for forming me in the, hopefully, in the inventor and inventor that I am today. Thank you.
Good evening, West Orange. My name is Victor Cirillo. I first want to start off by thanking Man Made a Difference and the West Orange African Heritage Organization. That only for the hard work and putting this together, but also because of the sensitivity of our analysis to all participating in this forum. So thank you very much for that. Again, my name is Victor Cirillo. I've been a resident of West Orange for sixteen years. I reside at 55 Mandeville Avenue. I was married at St. Joseph's Church. And my wife and I fell in love with the neighborhood, and we ended up buying a home across the street from the church when we were married. My family, I immigrated to this country in 1985 without speaking a word of English. So I have a unique perspective on the hard work as well as an appreciation of the quality of life we enjoy here in West Orange. Professionally, I possess a master's degree in public administration, and I am the head of the housing agency in the city of the state, where we have a budget of over $30 million. We develop, we rehabilitate, we build, and I have a personal understanding of redevelopment, having practiced myself personally. I've been involved in public service in West Orange for fourteen years, since I lived in town. I see a lot of faces and crowds that I've known for a long time. I started by being the forward chair of the public library. I was over the library foundation, raising money for the library. I was also the chairman of the Valley Neighborhood Preservation Program. I was a board member of the John Reddahouse, the John Deacon House, Jim Deacon House. And I was also a member of the Watcher Heights Neighborhood Preservation Program. I've been a councilman for four years now, and we have a track record. We haven't raised property taxes in three of the last four years, municipal property taxes. We've hired ninety police officers. We voted improvements, campaigns. I am proud of that record, and I hope that my number four, you cast one of your two votes for town council for Victor Cirillo and consider me again for reelection. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I want to thank the Man Made a Difference organization for putting together this debate tonight. And I also want to bring, well, firstly, my fellow council candidates. Plato, the ancient Greek philosopher, once said, "Wise men speak because they have something to say." But I am not going to lie, pretending to be no wise man. But my purpose in this evening is to listen and to learn. For the more you listen, the more you learn. The more you learn, the wiser you may be from. My name is Jean-Paul Sinatus, and I've been married for over thirty years. My two children, Gloria and Amel, are graduates from West Orange High School. I've been living in town for about ten years and eleven months. I do love West Orange, and I guess I know you do too. But love cannot be blind. We are facing some very serious issues that need to be addressed. Two of them: downtown. Downtown is the golden key to our success. A well-developed downtown will not only attract new businesses, but will also bring new visitors and shoppers. And my objective and goal is to transition these visitors and shoppers, when possible, to residents. I believe that downtown was the key. I have a French teacher. I have traveled in the different countries in Europe, and I have seen what they have done with their cities and their downtown. And I would like to bring the very same torch right here in town, so that people, when they come, can find a place to shop or to dine. Second thing, I believe accountability must be taken into account. Too many people who are tired have wanted solutions, have bad elected officials. They believe that nobody cares about them, they don't listen to their voices. I am here to represent the city. I will be your voice, because your interest, I, my interest, will serve. My name is Jean-Paul Sinatus, and I am one important council. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erich Schwartzbaum, and I'm for town council. I've been a resident of West Orange for the past twenty-nine years. Together with my wife Lisa, we've raised four children here who participated in many of the township activities. Professionally, I'm a CPA, MBA. I advise companies on becoming more efficient operationally as well as financially, as well as I've owned and operated numerous companies. I decided to run for West Orange Town Council because I was really very upset with the status quo. What I found is that you've been living here, and throughout the twenty-nine years, what we've seen is ever-increasing real estate taxes, our property values have not rebounded alongside many of the adjacent communities where property values have increased. And one of the things that I've heard over and over is really a lack of aboves for West Orange. So I decided that I wanted to try to make a difference, and instill business acumen into a township government. I've advised numerous non-profit organizations. I have served as the president of our local synagogue. When I served as a local, as a president, we started off, we were in financial disarray. We were able to build services and increase our revenues as well as get back on soundtrack. So what I would like to do is really instill business decision-making, which is what, a decision, what is best for the township as opposed to what's best for the individual. We need a vision. We need innovative solutions. So I hope this forum will give everyone an opportunity to hear different ideas, and at the end of the day on November 4th, that each and every one of you will have the opportunity to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Good evening, West Orange. My name is Dr. Akil Kafani. I want to first thank the West Orange African Heritage Association for having this opportunity for us to talk to you all and to share what you are visioning. I'm someone who's been in West Orange now for sixteen years. I live here with my wife and four children, two of whom are at the Gregory School, and I'm an active parent at Gregory School. I'm with the PTA. I'm also someone who is involved in West Orange in other ways, giving key addresses at the high school and making sure that what's going on in West Orange, that we're involved in, and that this is a part of us. We all moved here for a variety of reasons. But let me give you a couple of pieces about myself. First of all, I'm a PhD in sociology. I have a PhD from University of Pennsylvania and a master's from University of Pennsylvania. I also spent time traveling around the world, learning about things, learning and applying my sociological knowledge. I'm a professor at SS County College and work with lots of schools, West Orange residents, taught lots and lots of West Orange residents. And so being someone who's been involved in the community in West Orange and beyond, it is now my responsibility, my decision, with people and the township, to come and make change. Not just any change, but a positive change. See, we have the ability to make West Orange similar to that which it was many years ago. If we look back in the eighteen hundreds, the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, many of us don't know that the West Orange was a resort town. This is where everyone else wanted to go. So we have the ability to create a West Orange. We're not just wanting to go to Milburn and to South Orange and to Montclair. Let's have, create a place right here in West Orange where all those folks want to come here. Let's create a place where we have a connection, the types of connection that transforms West Orange into something great. We have many great things, great schools, but it all can be much better if we come together collectively, because it's not about me. It's about what we do collectively to create a place that is something that we want to have collectively. And we need to have smart development to get there. We need to look at the issues of development right here in downtown, but not just downtown. We need to have this vision that takes us throughout the entire community. And then I'm going to be the person that can do that, because I have the track record of working with people, of developing positive solutions, and we need smart development. That smart development means that we don't just make decisions that are based on what someone else gives us, but we analyze it, and we look at it in ways that we know that we're making the best decisions, not just for us, but for the town. And I ask you here, vote on number fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, all the candidates, for their wonderful introductions. I know that we had a few people that came in after we started with the introductions, so just to sort of quickly tell you a little bit about our housekeeping rooms for this evening, there will be no yelling, no screaming, no heckling, and no hand clapping. Please stay here, remain clapping for the end of our session. So before we begin with our first question, we just wanted to tell you a little bit about sort of the timing of how the questions will be answered this evening. So each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And if they choose to do so, they will have one minute to pour above. But that's totally up to them, who will give them that opportunity after each question has been answered by all the candidates. So I think we are ready to start with our first question for the evening. Okay, first question. How would you address downtown development, and how will you bring new business to West Orange? And we will start with Mr. Darkante.
I think I'll stand. I'll take a cue from the other candidates. So two questions, right? So the first question is about downtown redevelopment. And I think the obvious one everyone knows about is prison. If anyone doesn't know the innocent factory and the prison situation, that is the ISO, a couple of blocks that way, that's been depreciating home values on Layside next to the avenue, depreciating business values on Main Street. I think this one has been discussed a lot in bay, I think a lot of bay debates, it's been discussed a lot at town council. People should know, prison is over $720,000, building on other taxes. They defaulted on the terms of the redevelopment agreement. They came to the town with one idea of condos that turned into another idea for rentals that has proven that they have absolutely gone through a direction, no way of implementing it, and no way of getting it on, even if they could right now. If you watch the council meetings, you'll see regularly the incumbents are pressed to try and push the mayor to send a letter to prison, defaulting that, trying to get redevelopment started and fresh with a new redeveloped, but that hasn't happened. I think we need to get rid of prison. We need to get rid of development, and we need to start the project over. But I think besides the meeting, besides the downtown, some of the parts of West Orange is enormous parts, is enormous value. You rock in the valley, you have the true community. Lots of foot traffic, lots of car traffic, excellent opportunity for development. We have a grocery store in the zoo. They have 620,000 people entered into the zoo last year, but they just drive along. They drive right down to Waffle Den, there's no place to shop, there's no place to spend their money. And if you talk about trying to keep people even to want to live in West Orange, that's what they see, and that's what they think of West Orange, and they keep going back to their homes. I think if we look at those three parts of town as key, key areas, if we can get enormous value out of downtown. Thank you.
So the redevelopment project we're all afraid is quite frustrating. To talk about taxes and property and recruiting new businesses, I've started that before. I've been in the city of Sona here in West Orange for eighteen years. I made it into a board member, a board trustee for the Chamber of Commerce. What I try to do for the businesses in town, this is what I've already established. I created a chamber spotlight where West Orange businesses can make a commercial, free commercial as benefit to their business. There were a lot of benefits to that. There were also social networking events that was very new, a new idea introduced to the Chamber to welcome new business, to recruit new business, and to promote businesses in the town. And once I go back to the, I guess we're not recruiting already, but I do disagree with the concept I was just making. The prison property is a symbol of their contract, but as old taxpayers, they have to wait a year to pay. We'd set up a location if we were to defend them, so they will go into a less sale during the end of this year. It is a frustrating project, and they do have to be prepared to pay their taxes. I just will continue to do what I'm doing, what I'm doing on the Chamber. We have a defunct economic development commission that I have tried to reactivate. We definitely have apparently six other candidates that are interested in joining this commission, and we can all get a commitment and help and address the issues that I'm just going to do.
The redevelopment project, I think, is multi-layered, and I think we have to be very careful with the project. That property is now owned by someone. They have certain rights, but they also have certain responsibilities. I would like to see the partnership that prison developed with the town in West Orange and its residents have a much more immediate response. They should at least be cleaning up their property and making it at least presentable while litigation and all else is going on. Why was that owner, why was that owner allowed to basically resurface in blight? So clean it up. If you're not going to develop it, sell it. Let's get on with it. I'm not sure, since 2006 or whenever, 2012, when the final project was approved, I'm not sure that the same demographics are going to serve the town as the demographics served in 2012. Will people buy apartments in the Edison redevelopment area in 2014? I think a lot has to be I think a lot has to be done, and it's multi-layered. And if we don't get this right, I think our town is going to be in serious trouble as we go along.
Okay, so I've been asked to repeat the question. How will you bring new business to West Orange? And how would you address downtown development?
Sure. Council President McCartney just talked about the Economic Development Commission. We actually just started including residents. Came across former vice president of Man Cali Corporation. The purpose of the Economic Development Commission is to try to market the municipality, try to develop a bridge with potential investors, business investors for our areas, our empty lots, our empty stores. So, I fully support that initiative, and I hope that within the next few council meetings, you will have that on the agenda as council president. That's a terrific idea, and I have a couple of potential ponies that I've come across knocking on doors in the end meeting. As it relates to redevelopment, November 12th is a key date. The Supreme Court is going to hear this case. Group residents who have a right to express their position had sued the municipality before Superior Court, when we had the right to develop that vision and make that decision for you, the residents. They lost appellate division, it was appealed, they lost, and that went before the Superior Court. I am 100% positive that should, once the Supreme Court makes a decision, they will rule in the municipality's favor, and we can once again restart this process. As it relates to the $700,000, the amount on that parcel is actually 564, I believe the actual number, that they're behind, I don't know why they would pay 18% interest, but this corporation continues to pay 18% interest of $564,000. And I don't understand that, but at the end of the day, the township has a process for those folks that don't pay property taxes, commercial establishments, and that's a tax, and a tax fee, and at the end of the day, we will be collecting those funds. Thank you.
The question is, why do we want to remodel downtown? If we remodel downtown, we will change the history of West Orange. Because the road to success goes through downtown. There is no other way besides other grants and other different things that we can try to do. The question of what to do with downtown, number one, is to make it beautiful, make it attractive, make it love at first sight, make it irresistible. When people come to town, they look at downtown, they will say, this is where they want to come and come back time after time. If we bring back downtown, we bring back more businesses. With more businesses, we will have more revenues into town hall. And with that, we will no longer have the excuse of every single year increasing taxes on people. Because we need businesses to come to help us out. Yes, I heard that businesses were not raised, taxes were not raised, I'm sure. Indeed, taxes have been raised in 2014 because I see in my own statement. I don't know who put it there since nobody has done it, but it is there for everyone to see taxes have been raised.
So, the question is in regard to the downtown development of new business. It's clear that PRISM doesn't have the money. If on a contractual basis, they have the right to not pay taxes. However, the township, there's an agreement in place. And the only way you get someone to do something in a contentious position is to actually pursue your rights. And that is, the township really needs to force the issue. Because the bottom line is, it's not about the bond issue, it's about, they don't have the money, and the project in its current form doesn't make sense. And I would bet dollars to doughnuts that once the litigation is done, that they'll pursue bankruptcy in order to prolong the process. So, what really needs to be done is, we need to reinforce our rights and move the next step, which is to rebuild the project and look at the development, which should include both commercial and residential, as well as a portion of startups. If we want to start businesses, what we want, we, there is a concept today of incubators, and we need to also look at the concept of taxing incentives for people to open up businesses. Every city and township does it. What we do, that's the way you get businesses to start, it's not prolong, but you put in a vision and a program, and that's how you get businesses to come here. So, I think collectively, we need a vision and incentives.
Thank you. Want us to think about West Orange in a different way, right? When we talk about the plan to redevelop West Orange, one of the things that we have to look at is that the current administration has had and not continued to do it. Unfortunately, they failed in that regard. So, now it's time to bring in a new plan, a new group of folks who can execute a vision successfully to transform the township. We need a plan for West Orange that is 10, 20, 30 years down the road. We need long-range planning for West Orange. And the downtown development is only a portion of that development. But if we have that type of idea, if we have that long-range planning, we can no longer have hodgepodge development in West Orange. We need to have holistic development in West Orange that looks at how the downtown development fits in with what's going on in the Pleasantville section, fits in with what's going on in the Valley section. We need to have the whole township involved in the process of development, not just this area and that area. Because then, when we do that, we have a way of transforming West Orange that brings the vision that we need to have in West Orange. We need smart development. We need smart planning. We need to use best practices and those sort of things. This is a town where innovation lives. But we haven't seen innovation executed in the way that it can be. You have the ability to bring it if we change what we do and we bring in the residents, value the residents' participation and involvement. You are a vital part of the transformation. And so, we want to make sure that we have you along with us. If I'm, when I'm elected, I said when, when I'm elected, because I need your help, when I'm elected, we are going to transform this township to bring the beauty that we can have. It's no longer going to be hoping and wanting, it's going to be the place where everybody else wants to go. And this is only a matter of time before that happens. We need your involvement, and it's gonna happen.
Yeah, I've heard that so much as it relates to downtown redevelopment, and I think that we need to be, need to be comfortable or educated as far as this process. Someone spoke about vision and incentives needed. This proposal is a vision, and there are incentives built in, in order for PRISM to consider investing, the $40 million they've invested just to acquire that land, and now it's up to $63 million with the environmental cleanup that was done. So, they have made an investment due to the incentives that we provided, which are the promise to put in $3.15 billion to improve the infrastructure around that facility. And number two, to loan in $3.15 billion, which they will pay us back. Today, we have spent $0 because the project has been held up in court, and they haven't been able to get the financing that is needed.
Thank you. What I would like everyone to understand is that West Orange does not own this property. PRISM does. We have not, as Mr. Sirocco said, we have not put one nickel into this project. The market trends have changed. New York Times just had an article about millennials outweigh the number of baby boomers. And the 100-year-old building that was in Bloomfield that is owned by PRISM and just redeveloped by PRISM is what I would like to see here in West Orange. Again, in the neighborhood that needed to be revitalized and rebuilt. If you look, if you're on Parkway just heading to Bloomfield, you can see it right to the side, on your way. Anyways, that's the vision that I have. I have served on the planning board since 2002. The project has gone through some changes, yes, and they did go from for sale units to rentals because that's where PRISM is seeing market trends. So, I look forward to this redevelopment and look quite anxiously waiting till November 12th to when you all are ready, Mr. Sirocco.
All right, thank you. So, just a couple of points I want to clarify. When Councilman Sirocco says that we've spent $0, right now, we're in a record debt, $71 million. This year, in the budget, is a line of $6.5 million to manage our debt, $5 million for principal payments, $1.5 million interest. And when we're not getting $762,000 from PRISM, we're taking it from somewhere else. And guess what? We borrow, and we borrow, and we borrow. So, I'd say we're spending $1.5 million.
The expression, if you build it, will they come? I think that's the key right now. This project has gone on for so long that, as Councilwoman McCartney just said, the demographics may be completely different. We do not have good transportation from that area to places like New York City and Newark. What will happen when we build apartments and there may not be anybody to rent them?
Dr. McCartney has the next proposal.
Mr. Sirocco mentioned about vision. The problem is that it's a failed vision. And being a failed vision, if you think about it, if you come on that street, on Main Street, during the daytime from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, it's already a traffic nightmare. To add in there 300, and originally it was 600, new families, that's bad planning, that doesn't make good logical sense. And so, therefore, to suggest that that's a good idea is understanding that we have bad planning. We need people in there who can think about smart ways to develop that area. If we were to develop that area in such a way that we had something that complemented what's next door, we have already over 50,000 people that come to the Edison Center. If we develop something next door, say like a museum, someplace for our children to go, then we would have smart development. If you lowered it to 50, to 50 units, maybe you'd have some residents there, then it would be enough to accommodate that. But the other side of that is you have families, and we have to think about that as well. We cannot do that without planning properly. Thank you.
Yes. We need new ideas. We need new blood. We need new people to start thinking for West Orange. Others have been there, and they have done some good things. But it is about time we start doing some good things. So, what we need, we need to vote on several people that are going to take care of business. Downtown needs to be rebuilt. We need to bring businesses into town. The more businesses you bring, the more people who come to town, the more people will buy our homes. The more people buy our homes, the more money we have today in town to grow. The more money we have, the more services we can give to our residents. And we will start asking them every single year to pay more and more. We need to have restaurants in downtown because, as somebody said to me, someone may go to the museum, or they come out, they can buy some ice cream. We need to, we need to do something that make this place extremely irresistible to people coming to our downtown. We need new blood.
Ultimately, it's results versus rhetoric. The bottom line is, it's been eight years. If this was a good project, the current court system would not be relevant. The $6 million doesn't make or break a project that, as Mr. Sirocco said, 40, 60 million dollars, it's less than 10%. So, I would argue that they really don't want to develop, and they're going to come back and try to rebuild it. It's time for us to enforce our rights.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next question. What is your greatest strength and your biggest weakness? I'm gonna start with Mrs. McCarthy.
My greatest strength, I would imagine, oh my goodness, is what I started my intro with, that I have met, when I talked about the playground at Roosevelt Middle School, I was able to assemble a group of people to meet with the police and the recreation department so that our voices can be heard. When I did get elected, and I became a business owner here in town, and joined the Chamber, I did the same thing for businesses in the Chamber. Collectively, bringing them together and forming partnerships. So, the Chamber of Commerce members partner with the Edison Museum here on Main Street, and also the Downtown Alliance. It's just in that, pulling people together and creating partnerships that can make a community fold. When I started the social networking events, every organization, we have 120 organizations, every chairperson has been invited to all of this Chamber's social networking events, which are free, so that they can have a microphone, introduce themselves, promote their business, explain their service, and announce any community-oriented project that they have planned. So, I would say I have tried to unify the groups in town, and that's what I am seeking to do. I don't know, I'm a good listener. If you haven't listened, you know, if you haven't reached out to me, then that's an odd question, isn't it? I don't, I don't have an answer. I don't know, because I have been so strong in all the years that I have served on the council. And I just welcome, I welcome people's questions, I welcome people's concerns, and I do everything I can to address your concerns and have them resolved. Sorry?
I would say my greatest strength is management and organization. I run many schools, I run a publishing company, assisted the president of a publishing company in New York City, and I enjoy organization and management. My weakness, I guess, would be patience. When something should take five minutes and it takes an hour, I get a picture. I think we have a lot of work to do, and I think through organization and management and working on my patience weakness, I think I'd get a lot done for the Towneberry Village.
Let's talk about strengths. My strength is my understanding of public policy. And sometimes you'll see candidates, politicians, politicians, promising to move, and you realize that a lot of promises eventually don't come through. And you know why? Is because they really don't understand government. They don't understand the obstacles, policy issues that come on, drivers of government. Government is not a business. In government, we look to stretch the tax out. In business, we're looking to make a revenue. In West Orange, we try to keep property taxes low and only spend in prudent, prudent services because we have a responsibility to maintain those property values high. A lot of folks don't understand it. They think that just because you have a business background, you can come in and shoot for the boom, and eventually, reality hits you and you realize that that vision is not going to be realistic. You have fixed pensions and health benefits, you have binding arbitration, you have silver service, you have aggressive taxation. You have to figure out a commercial versus residential and its role. So always keep that in mind. Whenever everyone comes in and asks, "Why does a politician doesn't live up to their promises?" is because a lot of folks don't understand government and I do. I understand public policy. My weakness, I'm very transparent and something that's, and my wife can tell you, something that can be used against you guys. I'm an open book. Anything you want to know, just ask. Give me a call. So many people have my cellphone number. And sometimes people use that against you. Transparency is a good thing. It's important. But you know what? I'll continue to be transparent because he has got me to where I'm at. But it can also be utilized against you as it relates to those folks that want to do you harm. Thank you very much.
See, when people do not deliver what they promise, they always pay orders for not being able to understand. I am a teacher, a French teacher. My strength is my ability to do. Because as a teacher, you need to be very, to be very, very patient because you have to teach all mother of children. And I believe the very same thing I can bring to government because our town is a diverse type of classroom. So now we are trying to apply the very same principle. My weakness, I am always willing to give others a second chance. But in 2014, with what is going on in town, I am not ready to give a second chance anymore.
I would say my single greatest strength is an ability to come up with innovative solutions to complex problems. I'm a very clear, methodical thinker and very results-oriented. That's what's needed. You have a problem, you lay out steps to a solution. And I'm a consensus builder. My weakness is I'm really intolerant of people who make decisions based upon individual benefits versus the greater good.
My first biggest strength is that I am a solutions-oriented person. I, as a doctor in sociology, in terms of books I've written, in terms of the students that I teach, thousands of students, is that it has to be solution-oriented. And I used to run the Urban Issues Institute at Edson County College and I taught flats and municipal government. And so in understanding municipal government, I used to work with the New Jersey Urban Mayor's Association with the League of Municipalities. Those experiences, as well as sitting on various boards, gave me the background and understanding of how to go to look at budgets and manage budgets, but also to understand that solutions are possible and that we have to have a type of government that is one that views solutions as possible and not that there's things that are impossible. We have to be willing to step outside our comfort zone to be able to bring something to the table, to bring new people to the table, to incorporate them in ways that we haven't done before that then gives us the opportunity to be successful. If you want to talk about weaknesses, I would say my weakness is that I have a hard time saying them. So I'm willing to do everything that's possible to bring about change and work with lots of communities. I have a program today. There was a change in this time, in this venue, this event. Even though I had a program that was going on at the college all day, I still changed and I said yes so we can make it accommodate for other people. The point is that we have to be willing to reach out and to use our weaknesses and transform them into strengths. And if we see that we have the ability to do that, we have to be introspective. And not just me, but also looking at the administration, also looking at people in the community. How do we get everyone involved so that it's not just about one person? It's about what we do collectively to transform the township that we're in. Thank you.
In the interest of time, would please ask that you refrain from clapping after each candidate responds to a question? Thank you. Next question.
Excellent, thank you. I would say my greatest strength is the ability to execute and plan. So I already mentioned I'm Chief Operating Officer in my investment bank, but I have two other roles. One is I run a global team that does strategy, planning, execution. So what we do at my brokerage is we figure out what the clients want. We figure out how to move financial products through systems, how to settle it through markets. But we have to build and execute that so that people can trade, people can operate and you have software technologies that support all of it. The other part is, I think probably not my greatest weakness, I was saying that I have, I have two greatest weaknesses. Obviously, I have a six and seven overall. And at work, I can be really hard and up here, I can be very serious. And I try to do that when I go home and things will turn around, I think.
Okay. Your bonus?
So I'd like to address the issue whether government is business. Government is a business. We have budgets, we have revenues, we have expenses, we have services. If government isn't a business, well, we can only look to Detroit and we don't want to be like Detroit and fall for vanity because when your expenses exceed your revenues consistently and you're borrowing and you cannot repay them, you're left with no alternative. So I would counter and say government is a business. Yes, it is perhaps a not-for-profit business where our goal is a balanced budget.
I think we have to make clear about our tax bill that we keep talking about, that the county council is responsible for approximately 26% of that bill. The Board of Education is 62% and the county is the remainder. So it's coming up often about your tax bill and we get blamed for the entire tax bill and we are responsible for the 26% of that bill. And I've heard it before about the debt statement and the bond. The bond has not been issued. We do not own prison property. The debt statement took into consideration a bonding for the lawnmower and that was considered wasteful spending. We're not obligated for the bond for the lawnmower, but the property owners will be assessed and the township will be repaid. We had a fire truck, part of this debt service. We had a fire truck. Its life expectancy was 15 years. It ran for 24. You need to invest in a community.
Yeah, we have to report as well. Thank you. The gentleman over here spoke about the West Orange being the seventh highest tax in the municipality in the state of New Jersey. Even if you understand that that study is flawed, you really have to look at the statistics. But that study represents, is the, well, first of all, it takes away the commercial tax base, which by admission, if you read the article, takes away the commercial component, which was lower than the burden of that report. Okay, and threw the report entirely off. And if anybody wants to talk to me about taxation, I'll give you my cellphone number. Let's have fun, let's have some coffee. But what I'm saying is that it compares the median income of municipality versus the amount of taxes paid, meaning that a city, a town rather, like Alpine, New Jersey, the wealthiest town in the country, okay, has the lowest tax burden in the state of New Jersey. Why? Because it has, you know, the incomes are like off the roof and the people are able to, it's not comparable to like West Orange where the income is average income. They're a little bit better. So I, my point is I start looking at, if we look at the cycle of statistics, let's start looking at those studies a little bit deeper and understand that they may be flawed.
One of the problems that we have within the council are taxing issues. It's not just that taxes have been raised. It's the fact that people say taxes have not been raised. And I've been trying to figure out, well, if nobody did and they're paying more, I need to find a solution. And I've been thinking, I said, maybe cash for the, when they go sleeping in the middle of the night, it came in and reserved taxes. Yes, we need to find a solution so that taxes keep, does not keep, do not keep on going up and up and up. What goes up, most of the time, taxes, most part of the day, it's a law, it most of the time, at one point. And we need to do everything we can to make sure we start charging our residents these high taxes every single year.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Duncan's been in.
Sure. Thank you. I guess to respond to Councilman Cirillo and to some of the statistics, I'll throw out a couple more. The tax level right now is approximately $50 million. That's averaged all the, we put it to the operational cost of town. In 2006, it was $39 million. So it's a 20%. Who knows what that is, eight years, 20%. Since 2012, it's up another $1 million. Fortunately, for full transparency, my taxes are up about 75% since I moved to town 12 years ago. And 3.5% in the last couple of years. So taxes are, taxes are up on me because ideally you want your own values to go up and your taxes to go down. But right now what's happening is either your taxes are going up or if your taxes are going down, it's not because anyone did it bigger because the assessed value, the biggest investment you've ever made in your life, which is your home, is dropping.
I also would say that when we look at taxes, taxes are up, not just for one resident, but for all residents. And that when we look at the impact of the tax increase, we have got to stop talking just about taxes and incorporate the talking about taxes into increase, creating new revenue streams in the township. We hear question after question talking about taxes or the response. But no one is saying that the time, we have to tie together the new revenue streams and someone is going to replace the taxes that we need to pay for basic services. So as Cirillo talked about basic services, but we need to think about that is those basic services can be supplanted in terms of the way the money comes from if we bring in new revenue streams, if we have smart development. Right now, we, our development is bad news. We need to think about how we're going to transform that to make it something that's positive and make it something that we have vision. It was also said earlier that government is something that's passive. Government can't be passive. Government has to be active and we have to be active. Thank you.
Thank you. On this trip, the time is, we have a lot of questions. We have a lot of candidates. So we're going to ask, have we pulled up quotes? We'll stay them to the end if we can. So next session. How would you reduce the budget and also address wasteful spending? And we'll start with Dr. Wilson.
I had to manage multimillion-dollar budgets as a school administrator, as a dean of undergraduate school of education, et cetera. And you just have to spend what you bring in essentially. So to manage a budget means that you do what is necessary for the citizens of the town and you don't go any further than that, meaning you don't put any fat into the budget. It's as simple as that. You spend what you bring in and you hopefully don't go any further than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Question is, how do we reduce budget and address wasteful spending? We have to look at the essential services. What's needed for that, what's here for the municipality? Councilwoman McCarthy talked about, what is our goal? Every February and every March we get together as a town council, we start looking at that budget and we start picking apart what is essential and what is not. Over the last four years, we have not raised, we have not raised municipal property taxes in three out of four years. That means that we voted for a 0% tax increase in three out of the four years. So we have managed to really focus on what's essential. In 2010, we made some really difficult decisions. We were not, we weren't the most popular people when we knew that the economy was in bad shape and that we were concerned about folksmakers. We were concerned about the direction and the affordability of West Orange. So we made some difficult fiscal decisions. We were able to lower that budget to 2011 levels. That year, we had a $7 million gap to fill and we did. And it came in at 0%. And how do we improve on that? We should kind of start looking at shared services. We have shared services for local municipalities that we have, we continually implement and we're looking at new sources of revenue. So it's, at this point, West Orange, since 2010, has the 11th lowest municipal property tax increase out of 566 municipalities in New Jersey. And that's a statistic that can be approved if we go to the state of New Jersey first. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. We need to practice very fast spending. If we need to spend on something, if it is necessary, we spend. If it is not, we do not. How far waste in government? It is not always easy to know when something is a waste or not. It depends how it is discussed. You need to be inside of it so that you can see line by line what is it that they're doing and decide this is a waste. Because we can, we can talk about a risk and somebody says, "Well, this is not a risk because I am telling you because of that." And sometimes even that insight is very difficult to do to decide it was indeed a risk. So we cannot always talk about that. Once again, I read that taxes were not, we have a zero-sum tax. But I'm thinking about that new TV series, Orange is the Black. Okay, in town, it seems to be that 36 is the zero. Because according to the chief management officer, average residents will see under the price of $36. So if 36 is zero, well, I don't know. But I know we are paying much more. It was not a zero-sum tax. It was not zero because I am paying more and you are paying more.
So the question was how to reduce the budget and eliminate wasteful spending? One of the things I do when I go into a company is I ask everyone the following question. Give me two to three ideas that will eliminate wasteful spending or costs without reducing personnel. And you will be shocked at the answers and solutions you get. And that's no different than municipal government. That's what we need to do. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we do need to look at shared services where it makes sense. And third, we need to institute within the budget a triennial cycle where you take pieces of the budget and you don't have to rebid and analyze it. So you do have consistency. You're not rebidding everything every year, but you split it over a third. And therefore, you make sure that a vendor that charged you something one year, three years later, that there may be better opportunities. Some costs go up, but very often, there are costs that do go down.
There is a couple of things that we can do to address this issue. One is that the, when we look at the current administration, is that they basically have rubber-stap whatever comes through from the administration side. We need a council that understands that it is not responsible just to, okay, whatever comes from the administration side, but it's going to analyze it. It's going to dig into it and find out what's going on. And I'm suggesting that in the process, that we need to have a forensic audit. We need to find out where the money has been wasted, what's been going on with the budget. We need to have a council that's willing to come in and say, "Okay, this is where we've had wasteful spending. Put this to the table." Put this to the table and then figure that out. And then we come to the other side and say, this is where we can save. So those are the things that I think that we need to do when we look at how we're going to change this. We also have to have, well, let me take this back. I had a development corporation, right? I used to do redevelopment. So in doing redevelopment, I understand many of the things that happen. And one of the things that we have here in West Orange that is really an absurdity is the number of change orders and the amount of those change orders. You, when you have development, you understand that there's going to be some increase in the final amount. But if you look at the redevelopment that's going on in the valley, right, with the police substation, if it went from two hundred and something to four hundred and something thousand dollars, there's a problem. And we need to address that problem. That's not acceptable. We need to make sure that we have a smart way of understanding and looking at it. And right now, we haven't done it. So this is what we're gonna do with the new administration. We're gonna look at it in a different way, we're gonna make sure we dig into the belly of what's going on with the budget. Thank you.
So the question, if I remember correctly, reduce the budget and address wasteful spending. Someone talked together, maybe a few good examples. One, Council President McCarthy just mentioned, the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars we gave to the Well Park for closeovers runs on the road to the sewer work, which we were not legally obligated to give them. So I'd probably start there. I think also failed implementation, by doing it wrong the first time, it's gonna end up costing this town a lot of money. A great example are the police cameras, eleven cameras, monitors in the police station. Not done well in partnership with police department because nobody's watching those cameras. So in essence, we have a reactive policy, we don't have a proactive policy. And then to circle back and make this whole thing right, it's gonna cost you a lot. You can reinvest in a project where we should have started and stopped. So it's gonna cost us a lot of money to fix that project and make it effective. I think the last part is when it comes to wasteful spending, I'll go back to the record debt at the townhouse. In April, the incumbents here approved bond, approximately six point six million dollars. And that included, I believe, the four hundred thousand dollar line item, that included bonding traffic hoes, hoses, cots, desks, printers, and a host of other items that just don't seem like the things that we should be borrowing on now, kicking the can down the road and trying to be later.
Well, hopefully, for all of you that have followed along in my history on the council, my actions speak a whole lot louder than words because the question is, how have you typically reduced the budget, or what have you done? I can tell you what I have done. I am, of course, looking at one side of the ledger. Some people are fixated on one side of the ledger, but there is also another side of the ledger. I supported and introduced a single-straight recycling program. Changed from what we had before, and over five years, projected in this contract, we will save two million dollars with our new waste and hauling vendor. In doing that contract, the new vendor is also associated with the Essex County aggregate program. Using that aggregate program, the county has an aggregate, we pay for all the garbage to be hauled away. The county has an aggregate where we are saving one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to begin that program so that we can save additional funds. I have too many words. I supported the energy aggregation residence. This is only a twenty-one month contract where we are saving two million dollars for residents that are participating in the contract. I approved the health insurance fund, which is an aggregate for health insurance benefits with low fees. Again, saving money for all the employees, saving money for the taxpayers, saving money for the residents. Also, helping the, it ensures that the residents, the employees, I'm sorry, would have their benefits, stay, keep their benefits the same. Talking about wasteful spending, I don't see things as wasteful spending. The five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that the council approved for the Well Park. I have to make an analogy because it's the same analogy that goes with the bonds and the redevelopment. It is one system. The Well Park had a system, a one-hundred-year-old system. It is an integral part of outer system. And everything is needed and we pay. So we have to look at long-term savings.
Thank you. Next question. The redevelopment agreement clearly states that property tax delinquency is an event of default. Why haven't the two incumbents enforced this? And would the other candidates enforce it?
Thank you. The, we have enforced it. This is actually the second time the decision is up. We have sent a letter of approval and those property taxes that were being held, that were owed at that time. So we have enforced it, number one. Number two, you know, did you guys know that this property pays on average nine hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes? Nine hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes. So it's, we are collecting taxes from that property that we're behind right now. But like, we spoke, like, Councilwoman McCarthy mentioned before, they're treated just like any other commercial property owner as it stands right now. There is no deal with prison because they don't have their financing plan as it relates to the partnership with West Orange. So they're being treated just as another commercial entity, which means that they're gonna pay eighteen percent interest on anything that they're behind. Should they not pay by the end of the year, then that debt is sold and a lien is basically this property. We can take that property back. We can actually acquire that property should those taxes not be paid. So there is a vehicle for this. Now, I guess the real question that was posed is, hey, you know, is that right? Is we going into partnership with these people? You know, why should we allow them to not, to continue paying their taxes on time when we're looking to work together down the road? Well, in the past, they've been holding, they've paid their property taxes. So we're hoping that, you know, once the Supreme Court case is settled, then they would need to also make us whole in order for us to move forward with that commitment that's on the table right now and enter into a partnership. So the point is, is that we wouldn't enter into a partnership if they don't pay those property taxes that they're owed at this point. Thank you.
They didn't pay. They need to go. It's as simple as that. Somebody may say, I have good intentions. But we know what happened to good intentions. So they need to pay, or they need to go. Why? Because we need to move forward. Downtown needs to be renewed. Prison, they can pay, fine. They can untidy, they leave, and then we come back and we make downtown something beautiful. So people can not only come to shop, dine, but they would come to live here by property. Every time somebody goes by downtown and they look at the complex, they say, what is this? A lot of people believe that, oh, this is so lovely. So downtown, West Orange is a lovely place, it's a beautiful place. We have to move on downtown and we need to fix it. We have to look at this through a new prison. We have to look at it from the vision of those who are sitting here who would like to do something different. We've been waiting long enough, it is time to move on.
The question was, prison's profit isn't delinquent on their property taxes and that is an event of default. So implied in there is that there is a contractual agreement between two sophisticated parties that if you don't pay your taxes, it's an event of default. Now, what we're saying is, oh, we have another thing, which is, there is a separate thing. If you don't pay your taxes, you then could pay eighteen percent interest. Well, that's a separate municipal issue. There's a contractual obligation. Two parties enter into an agreement. If one party defaults, what you do is you enforce your rights. And therefore, if the other party, mainly prison, has the money, they'll pay it. And if not, then we move on. So again, we have a contractual obligation that they entered into an agreement, we enforce our agreements with two parties.
Property default, then they need to go ahead and move on out. Think about the idea of prison. A prisoner shows you a spectrum of light, something that's beautiful. We don't have a prison down there. We have something other than a prison. I don't even know what you call it, but what I would say to you right now is that the weeds have turned into trees and we need a tree service to cut down the weeds. That to me is an atrocity. We need to think about something different that we can do. We need a prison down there, but not this company. This company is not gonna provide us with the prison that we want downstairs, downtown. The beauty that we want to need, the valor, the things that make us want to be and walk down. You don't wanna walk, you can't walk down. As a matter of fact, they take, they take it over the sidewalk and you can't even walk down the street now. We need something different. We need an administration that's going to change that idea. The current administration keeps telling us over and over again that we're gonna do like eighteen percent. I don't want the eighteen percent. That's irrelevant to me because my children can't walk down there and see something beautiful coming out of Edison Center. They walk down and they're scared because there might be rats or some other, it might be a lion, that's all I know. But the reality is that we need something different right there and we need a different plan. It's not about waiting for them to come and just do a simple thing of pay the eighteen percent taxes. That's not the point. That's missing the point. The point is that we want redevelopment. And that we can do that if we take the initiative to do so. And I promise you that I'm gonna champion that process and incorporate that not just in the downtown area, but thinking about that throughout West Orange. We need a holistic response.
Sure, repeating the question. The redevelopment agreement clearly states that property tax delinquency is an event of default. Why haven't the two incumbents enforced this? And would the other candidates enforce it?
Thank you. So with that question, one thing I have absolutely agree with the incumbents on is that there are hard rules and procedures. We can't just shove it out. You have to follow the agreement. They have not paid their taxes and it's an event of default. What Councilman Cirillo mentioned was the first time the town sent a letter, which is correct. I believe about one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in back taxes. The town sent a letter to prison and prison paid it. And the question is, why are we waiting to send that letter again to recoup that seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in back taxes? I think this is a very important topic because it's not just about the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in back taxes, but it's a couple of things. There's a correlation between all property values in town. And properties on National Avenue, basically abandoned factory, are depressed because they're basically abandoned factory. And I live far away in St. Cloud, but if the property values on National Avenue tripled because they face something beautiful, that would make other parts of town more expensive too, because that falls. I think on top of that, when you think about what if a big company, the most important big companies to West Orange, Target, things like that. But if I was a big company, I was on the executive board, I would be watching the prison situation because it's not clear West Orange's position towards big business. Or we friendly, or we not. And I think by delaying any of these items that we can, I think it impacts other possibilities for all investment.
I am going to say that I am going to hold out hope for this project. The reason is that they have to the end of the year. They have to, and they have, again, world arguments are heard on November twelfth. So I can at least wait until November twelfth. Financial institutions are not going to release money with a Supreme Court decision looming. What, we don't own the property, we are not spending any money on the property. And unfortunately, you're right, property maintenance should be there, forcing them to pay this. The reason I'm holding out hope is that when I approve a project on the planning board, we scaled down the number of units when it went to rentals, to house studios and one bedrooms. And it still has eighteen thousand square feet of rental space. We're trying to create a little community on our Main Street. I did not want to create a funnel where everything stayed in that space. I wanted to be redeveloped and trickle down to the other businesses on Main Street. The reason I'm holding out hope is because we, as a municipality, stand to garner six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year with the payments and low of taxes on this project. Ninety-five percent of that amount comes back to the taxpayer as opposed to your tax bill right now split up with sixty-two percent going to the Board of Ed, twenty-six percent going to the township, and the rest going to the county. So that's really why I'm holding out hope, because there is revenue to be generated from this project.
I think one of the frustrations we all have about this project is that Thomas Edison has been declared the man of the millennium by Life Magazine and other people. And we are supposed to be the showcase, or one of the showcases for Thomas Edison, and right now, we are not. Yes, default is an option, and if that's the most efficient way to go about this, we must do it. Unfortunately, as I said before, we don't own the property right now. And that has to be litigated, that has to be, there has to be a conclusion to that before anything can be done, except of course, sending a letter to default. If we take back that property, what's going to happen to it? Will we find the developers to go in there and not take another ten years to develop it, or twelve years? So before we take any further steps, we have to answer several questions. And those questions are hard questions. It's not as simple as default, goodbye. There's a lot between.
Thank you. Next question. Should the mayor and council appoint the school board? And should we change the system by referendum? So we'll start with Mr. Senators.
We are dealing with two separate entities. The municipality and the school system. And I have a teacher. Politicians should take care of business of politics. Educators should take care of things pertaining to the school. We should keep them separate. But since each of them have a vested interest in the welfare of the school system, where ever possible, they should work together to make sure that we have our very modern school system because we, our school system is a magnet to draw people into town. So let's keep politics where it belongs. Let's keep education where it belongs. Do not go where we're not supposed to go. Together, they can work, but they keep, they still stay in their own homes. There is downtown and there is Eagle Rock. Let the eagle fly is of education.
We can all wish for a lot of things, but the bottom line is, there's a process in place. The fact is that there's a separation between the school board and the town. That's the fact. When we go into a referendum, we can try to do it, but I believe it's mandated by the state. So it really, if the people of the town wanna do it, we should push it, but I believe we would have to push it all the way up to the state. There are ways to push the budget. I think one of the things we need to do from a town council, as well as the mayor's office, is to have input. And they do, they do try to have input. However, the fact is, the board of the Board of Education is an independent body and they don't have to listen. But we, if we all collectively push for good education as well as controlled spending, I think it will help us all.
First and foremost, I'm an educator. I've been in education now since nineteen eighty-eight. I've worked with lots of schools in the process. When we think about whether or not the council and the mayor's office should push for a referendum to change the system, we first need to think about best practices. We can look around the state of New Jersey and see that there are cases- We can look around the state of New Jersey and see that there are cases where that, East Orange is one, East Orange has the Board of Ed appointed, the superintendent is directly related to the mayor's office. We can look at other places where that's the case, but the point is that here, I think that we need to, we don't necessarily have to go immediately to a referendum. That can be something that we do as a servant, right, I'm a sociologist, I'm a researcher. We can take to the community, to ask the community what they think about the process. We can have engagement, we can do focus groups, we can do town hall meetings, just like this here, but to ask specific questions about, to the people, to see what they think about those issues. We need to value the community and know that we have smart people in West Orange walking here, right? We have smart people here who have smart ideas, and that we're here working to be elected officials to execute the things that our smart people want to have done. And so we take those things and we have smart development. In reference to the other part about this with the council and the mayor's office involved in it, I think that there's some merit to that, but I think that there's no easy decision here. But we can definitely engage in the process so that we have smarter development. And in terms of the working relationship with the council and the school board, it's not effective right now, but there's a channel for that, and we need to make that more effective. And then we need new people in office to make that channel more effective.
So initially, this election was supposed to be back in May, and the council had voted to postpone the election until November, giving themselves six more months in office. I think that's just one of the reasons why the council and the mayor's office should steer clear of the school. The boards involved in governance, education, council doesn't have the school budgets, but I think there's a lot of room for partnership. I think a couple of things. First, we're careful, where the school's buying, where the town's buying, look to partner up, look to get economies of scale, need more money in the budget for the school, need more money in the budget for the town, so we can focus on our own legal priorities. And also I think when it comes to safety issues, I think the town should look to have police availability and presence around schools when they're in session. I think we should have environmental variables like lighting around school on adjacent properties in winter mornings, late nights. This will provide a safe atmosphere for the kids, the parents, the teachers. So there is a lot of room for partnership between the town and the school, but I do not think that we should be involved in the process.
I think the people should continue to elect the people they want on the Board of Ed. I'm currently the Board of Ed meeting of the town council liaison to the Board of Ed, and I feel I have a strong relationship with the Board of Ed. When I found ways to save money, and again, it's that mundane issue about waste and recycling, but I found a way to save money. I am currently, I have the legal department, our township legal department, and the Board of Ed legal department, and the VA, OBA's, looking at the Board of Ed contract for their waste and recycling. If the township is using a vendor that can stand to save the town municipality for five years over $2 million, I want the Board of Ed to do the same. The Board of Ed's vendor right now is not part of that advocate that I just talked about, so we want to find out reasons why. I'm constantly creating ideas, trying to find solutions that save all of us money. We are not responsible.
Is it iPhone? No. We don't need an elected school board. Let me try to think of experience. It's, we should be powerful out of the school system, but we should do this, we should be proactive in making sure that we're stretching our tax dollars, we're seeing what we're doing at the municipal level, where again, we have come in at 0% in three of the last four years. We have cut back on the municipal budget, and I hope that, you know, my colleagues in the Board of Ed can continue to do their best to follow, to follow that lead. I've shared these ideas and some additional ideas with the West Orange Education Association and the New Jersey Education Association, and I'm proud to say that I've received their endorsement for my candidacy for reelection. So I'm looking forward to working with the education community and the teachers out there because I've received your endorsement, and if the Board of Education would like to talk to me about some of my ideas, I welcome that, but again, to answer that question, I do not support an elected school board. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed at Mr. Schwartzbaum, and after he answers the question, any of the candidates that would like to answer that question may do so. How would you go about reducing real estate taxes?
How would I go about reducing real estate taxes? I think we've gone over this several times. Real estate taxes is a function of two things. One is revenue, the other one is expenses. We need to look at our expenses, look at where we can improve and cut costs. We need to work with, as I discussed before, to implement a strategy of doing a triennial cycle within the budget, so therefore you look at expenses, you rebid various items to make sure that you're still getting the best cost, as well as looking at increasing the revenue via commercial, property, ratables, as well as public-private industries to try and get people to get businesses as well as the individuals to move into West Orange. So much of our town is based upon the values of our home. We need to increase the value of our homes, and the way you do that is by having people want to move into this town, and therefore in real estate, our real estate taxes collectively can be reduced.
I think that when we look at taxes and if we want to, or how we reduce them, is that the first thing honestly is that we need to increase the ratables. We need to look at West Orange in all of its areas to make sure that we can figure out ways to bring in new ratables that can supplant the ratables that are coming from your properties right now. Our property taxes are our main source of rateable, but we have the ability to do something different. We also can look at how we can pull in new grants, right? Work with the federal government, work with the state of New Jersey, work with Essex County. We can get CDBG money, and we can then use that, those things to supplant some of the things that we already do, and then work with the corporations in the area so that we can think about how some of the things that we already do can be done differently, can be done better. And if we find out those ways, if we think about those things, then we have the smart development that we need that's going to transform some of our tax-based problems. If we look at it and we just continue to do the same thing, we keep saying just to lower taxes, just saying lower taxes alone is not going to do it. We can lower taxes, but only when we look at it from a holistic approach.
We need grants. We need to forge new relationships with towns around us. We need to court trentor and try to find money. But there are other things that we can do to be distinct in West Orange. For example, advertise the town, sell it to all the people. When you travel, let people know how beautiful West Orange is. Tell them that they've lived in Iraq, they've seen New York right on their feet. Tell them they can even touch New York. Tell them about the beautiful things that we do every single day. Tell them that we have a blue lab of town. The other day I heard that we have two new businesses coming from Montclair, and I said to myself, imagine if West Orange downtown was exactly what it was supposed to be, how many other businesses would have left Montclair and moved right here? So we need to make sure that when you travel abroad, let people know that West Orange is a beautiful town. Tell them we have hotels, we have everything that they need to spend a wonderful vacation. We have a beautiful place, we need to advertise it. The more people who own the town, the more money they want to bring. The more money they bring, we no longer have the excuse of raising your taxes, we will take it down. Who knows, one day we may wake up and find out that in West Orange, taxes that have been told up have finally come down. Yes, we can advertise this.
Would anyone else like to?
I think I already stated a lot of the actions that I have already taken and all the ideas that I have already implemented that have worked to save our tax dollars. It was mentioned about the schools. Also, there's another way to save dollars, and that is why I'm moving the election from May to November. It was not just to serve an additional six months, it was to save $80,000 and to have greater turnout in the November election. And also looking, just to go back to the school issue, I am also looking, my initiative, my first initiative as county president was to get the voting out of schools. Our tax dollars have been raised substantially because of homeland security mandates. We have had to increase training for active shooting for our locks, for cameras, surveillance. A lot of things have happened in our schools that have raised our taxes, in that 62% that I've told you about. I had an initiative, I have tried to implement, I am trying to implement an initiative to get the voting out of schools. I have a district area voting district map to locate alternate sites. I have written letters to 24 locations asking them if they would be considered an alternate site for us to vote. It has to stay within a thousand-foot radius of where you currently do vote, and five, so far, I have received five considerations that the county board of elections said that they would review after this election. It was not a time to be posted for this election unfortunately, because everything the county needed was delayed for first. So I will continue to work on any and just trying to, and I mentioned before about the single-stream recycling, the energy aggregation, there are so many initiatives that haven't been implemented to save our tax dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman. How do we lower taxes more than we've done? It's really difficult. We're down to bare bones, and we have to talk about sacrificing, fixing up the apartments, the plumbing of your driveways, there was two storms, you had Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Irene to worry about in addition to that, fire services, police services. The council even spoke about so many initiatives that we undertook to make sure that we stayed with stabilized property taxes, like I said, in three out of the last four years. We saved a million dollars as a relation to garbage bin. We cut back a million dollars due to the single-stream recycling. We renegotiated healthcare services at $255,000. We made a difficult decision to terminate 56 employees, I don't want to be exact term, I don't want to be insensitive, in 2010. I'm proud of the record over that time, and we're starting to see the result of that. Property values are stabilizing, the real estate market, I've talked to several real estate agents, they're saying that, you know, homes are moving, that values are going up, and I think that we should all be proud that we've done our best over the last four years to make sure that West Orange went through that difficult economy, that difficult period, and that we're still having good quality of life that we all enjoy and that we all want to continue. Thank you.
So I think a couple of ways that we could look to bring down the taxes, obviously it's not simply going to be a consequence of how much the town spends and how much revenue we bring in. In terms of what we can cut costs, I think we've had a lot of force-making decisions made by the current council, where we had to replace the bleachers of the high school baseball field for $60,000, perfectly comfortable bleachers because they needed a new sightline. Now, I know that they were said to be handicapped seating, but I would say that we should just put the handicapped seating in and not tore down the bleachers. Again, we talked about the $525,000 for the frostbite in the Royal Park. We've covered $400,000 for the renovation of the building for a new police substation in the valley, even though it was a right-hand exit door to a building that we paid $360,000 a year to lease. So I think there's a lot of places we can cut spending. Also, we need to reduce our debt, because right now, like I said earlier, we'll pay $6.5 million service debt on a $74 million budget, we're paying 7% to 8% of our overall budget for debt service, and if we can minimize our debt service, we can use that money to reinvest in the town. Where I would cut, and this is something that Councilman Cirillo just touched upon, is back in 2010, 2011, where the votes were taken to reduce the police force by eight people as well as demoralize the officers. I think we should move our police department as a commodity, I think we should give the best people careers, and we can't be demoralizing, I think we need to do everything we can to support our police and our safety because of everything that we've done. Thank you.
Next question. How should we address crime and security in town? And what is your plan to make the police department more ethnically diverse? Can we start with Mr. Budakapari?
Okay, so in terms of addressing, the question was addressing crime, correct?
Yes, let me just repeat the question. How should we address crime and security in town? And what is your plan to make the police department more ethnically diverse?
Okay, so first and foremost, in terms of crime in township, I think that, in terms of crime and security, I think that we need to look at the township and look at the different areas and see that there's different types of challenges in different locations, and we need to understand what those different challenges are, and we need to develop solutions to those challenges. One of the things that I think is important though is that when we look at the township, when I first moved here 16 years ago, I was involved with helping with the township in fact, to welcome new residents. I was involved, I set up a, worked with the Neighborhood Watch program, and we had block party and things of that nature. Those are some of the things that we need to have in township more often. We need to figure out a way to make sure that we know our neighbors, because I think the first part about our safety and security is knowing who's on your block. When people come on the block and you don't love them, but they've been there for 20 years, that's a problem. We have, when I walk through town, people have been saying that they don't know people who live down the street or around the corner. We need to make sure that we have, we foster a way to do that, and I think that we can do that by having the township develop a more effective way to secure Neighborhood Watch programs. And then the other piece in terms of how do we address the challenges of racial disparity in the police force, is that we've got to make sure that we have, if we need it, we need to have a training, a study and deal with race, race relations and written on it, and we need to figure out how we're going to address those issues and make sure that people are sensitive to the change in community, right? There's changes in terms of population, changes in socioeconomic levels, we need to have a police department who is understanding and sensitive to those things, and so training is an important part of that. It's proven itself to be successful time and time again. Otherwise, we end up with having tense situations that are not there. The other piece is about recruitment. How do we recruit? Who do we recruit? And that, those are those little challenges there.
Okay, thank you. So I think with this question, it's about crime and diversity of the police force. I think where I would start when it came to crime is I would review the camera implementation that the town put in place. So the town spent $250,000 to put in 11 cameras that are currently not being watched in the police station. So they are there for reactive purposes, and as far as I'm aware, they have not been used for their protection. And the first thing we have to do is we have to look at that surface, we have to do it in partnership with the police department, and we need to implement that in such a way so that people are watching those monitors. I think if you had a proactive approach where you can see crime and you can see it happening in real time, based on those facts, I don't think we know how many police we actually need to increase by, because we have a whole way of targeting neighborhoods with cameras and redirecting specific police officers to specific areas when crime happens in real time. I think we need to increase signage once we get the cameras and work effectively so that residents and folks know that there are cameras, and then hopefully those areas will become safer. I think then only definitely the work of the police department can understand the size of the force that they think that they need to move into the town. I don't think it should be up to us alone, I think we need to do it in partnership with them. I also think that it ties into the diversity question. I think the police department can't solve crime by themselves, they need to work with the community, whether it's churches, the synagogues. They need to work with the community, whether it's churches, the synagogues, the community groups. I think as long as we have that partnership, then through that, you should have a diversity of the police force, because they're not operating as a side either. They are operating, and I know that when we have these partnerships, they are operating all the different parts of the community and hopefully, and the taxes and children and potentially raise people around the learning facilities.
I agree with part of the statement that was just made about the police and their Neighborhood Watch and community outreach. That's already happening. There are so many areas in town that already have Neighborhood Watch groups. They already, they have online, our neighborhood has them next door. It's called, it's an online service that people can wait and address questions. Police, if you have an issue, all you have to do is call them. They are so receptive. If Valley Neighborhood Watch group, they actually come out monthly and talk to the residents in the valley area. I think it's a silly statement to say that the cameras are wasteful spending. Do you really think on one hand we're saying we're going to save dollars and on the other hand hire someone to sit there and monitor? No, the cameras are at the dispatch center. Of course you have dispatchers that are looking at these cameras. I don't consider that wasteful spending, because the wasteful spending would be hard to hire someone to sit there and monitor them. They are already being monitored by the dispatch. The substation keeps coming up. The substation we got for one dollar. Keep talking about using rent in the valley. We don't own that space. We are paying rent. Half the hands organization in Orange wants their space back so that they can get rent. So this is not wasteful spending. This, the valley needs the substation here. I'm looking at the two thousand and thirteen uniform crime report, most current. We talk about educational outreach. I think what I find interesting is that I could pick out any one of these columns and give you a spin. I found out my weakness is that I don't blog, because a blog just gives you one side of the story. It's just your opinion and there are so many facts. So anyone can pick out any one of these columns and spin it the way they did, spin it. And I keep hearing this wasteful spending. It's bothering me because it's just one side of the story. I have to finish by saying since two thousand and twelve, even with our reduced police force, our overall crime totals have gone from thirty percent down to sixteen percent. Thank you, Ms. Henry.
You may recognize me as the guy with the sign. For the past few months, I've been on every street corner, every intersection, every major thoroughfare in West Orange, waiting to you. Yes, sorry. That is it. Thank you. And I wait to the police. They're out there and they're very diverse. I'm waiting to African-American police and Hispanic police and women. I'm not quite sure, but as a councilman, I don't know what I can do about crime per se, because I'm, as a councilman, going to respond to what the administration presents to me. And I'm going to ask the questions when the administration comes up with some sort of proposal and I'm going to ask the questions then. So I don't know if that question is so appropriate for a councilman, because in a strong mayor form of government, the administration really makes the proposals and then the council, of course, votes, obviously using hopefully a lot of data and a lot of research. But of course, crime is a major consideration of every community. And if there are things that need to be done, the council must vote for them to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Hodgson. We do have the ability to present our case during the budget process. If we see that crime is an issue that we want to pursue or invest in, police protection, we do so. So we do have a strong say in the process. I do want to say to our councilwoman, to Dr. Gordon's point about those cameras, that nobody's watching them. I hope that bad guys are home and not watching and telling people that nobody's watching those cameras. There's a reason why we put up eleven cameras, it's for deterrent purposes, like Susan Gordon talks about. There are dispatchers that run those cameras and I hope, again, that we're not compromising the municipality by saying nobody's watching those cameras. So have go ahead and value it. The other issue I want to talk about is, talk about the substation for one dollar. And after rent, we're paying for cleanup because it used to be a gas station. So we are very supportive of that, because we feel that my request was to make sure that the signage was big enough so the bad guys, the same guy that we shouldn't tell that those numbers watching those cameras, do not come to Valley Road, do not come to the Gregory section and realize that we're going to proactively, proactively seek all avenues to make sure that men take their core. As it relates to a more ethnically diverse police department, it's really difficult because of the civil service rules and there's a process. However, what I would encourage and what I would push is to have classes with minorities, people like, you know, Hispanics, African-Americans, different ethnic communities to come together and learn about these tests, learn about the process, so that we can jointly be at the same level in terms of our knowledge of these civil service exams. And in the process, we'll be able to develop the police force that represents the ethnicity. We speak fifty-nine languages in West Orange, the ethnicity of our town. Thank you.
Well, I would simply say that crime is just like elmo shot. If left unchecked and untreated, it may be, it may be able to reach us wherever we are. So we need to do something about crime. Very glad that the cameras are being monitored by someone, because West Orange is a safe town to live in. I love the job that the police, the policemen are doing. I feel secure when I live here, but there is always room to do something. As to the question of diversity, well, look no further at this table tonight. Look at what you see, the development of color. So this is a taste of what is, what is coming for West Orange. Yes, indeed, we need to have all color, all shape, all sizes, because that's, West Orange is a beautiful place. If we have fifty-nine different individuals smoking, so we need to have not fifty-nine different ethnicities to be in the police department, because you need to hire the best possible people that you can. But I believe soon enough we'll see more and more and more and more to be West Orange that make both that is made. Using the prison that it is, we will see more and more coming. So West Orange, please, please, soon, takes a little change for the better.
We're all very concerned about crime and security. Police presence is paramount as well as a perception of security. The substation is a very good thing, because there's a perception, if there's a, as well as an actual presence of police. Security cameras, while we could argue in regard to what the costs are, the fact is most security cameras are used after, in fact, yes, there are people monitoring, but for the most part, they're used to prosecute and so therefore we are doing it. It's a sunk cost. So we need, we need that. As well as, one thing that we have to do is in our decision-making, and one of them is in regard to the North Vale Avenue Quick Check, the twenty-four-seven. The fact is that we live in suburbia. After ten, eleven o'clock, nothing happens. The keeping something open twenty-four-seven will only invite crime.
Thank you. We received a number of questions, but we're unable to ask them all. Now we must transition to the candidates who vote. Each candidate will get two minutes to rebut mission. And after they vote, each candidate will then have two minutes for closing remarks. We'll begin with Dr. Cavani to start the rebut.
Thank you. For a rebut, there's about three main things I want to address here. One is, we talk about the substation. I think we've had a misrepresentation of what the substation developed, right? So it was mentioned to us with the guide for one dollar. But if you look at it, they spent over four hundred thousand and the previous rent was for thirty-six hundred. So if we just do the simple math, that's a hundred and eleven years it would take to get to that point. So I think that if we think about that, that that's way too far down the road. There was much more savings and we could have come up with other ideas about what to do. It's not just about the perception of security. We must have security. And so the having the cameras there, having the substation, and I lived in that area. When it first opened up, I would see officers in there. Now you go out there, I don't see anybody in there. So the perception, to even the people who might commit crime, they know that there's the perception there's no, there's nothing to be perceived, because there's nothing there. The other piece that I want to address is that, as councilpeople, we are, we are not rubber stampeders of the administration. We are legislators. We should be coming up with legislation. We should be able to, even though we have a strong mayor system, we need to understand that we can bring in ideas and we should be bringing in ideas, not just doing whatever it is that the mayor and the administration says. We need to work with them. It's not that we should be at odds, but we need to understand what our role is in the process. And I want someone who's not only studied, taught it, but has worked on these things before. And with prison, there was a mentioning of a triple-down process with prison. Well, we know that triple-down failed in the eighties. We don't need triple-down theory in West Orange. We need to make sure that we have a process where we are developing something and we are not just working with who prison is, but that we're working with all the other residents, all the other businesses in the area and making sure that we have a comprehensive plan. We need a master plan that is ten, twenty, thirty years long so that we have that type of vision in West Orange. And I'm going to prove it.
Thank you. Mr. Cavani.
Sure, thank you. So again, if we look at the tax leviness town in back in two thousand and six, it was thirty-nine million dollars and now that's fifty million dollars. And granted, in recent years, it has gone, it's gone up slightly, but I don't think that we should be proud that we've seen the tax levy go up twenty percent in the last eight years and it held it there. I think we should be looking to do whatever we can do to bring that down. I think that just ties into a lot of what we talked about earlier tonight. We need to review spending. Where spending makes sense to invest in the town, we need to do it. And that's where it comes down to increasing property values, increasing safety and driving a business investment. We need to block any wasteful spending, and we covered a lot of that this evening. Again, we know the police substation in the valley has been a hot topic because of the four hundred thousand and one dollars that is costing the town. But I think what's key to talk about that is we do have the property right next door for thirty-six hundred dollars a year. No one's saying we shouldn't have a police presence. No one's saying we should abandon the valley. What we're saying is give them exactly what we should be giving them, but for thirty-six hundred dollars a year, not for one dollar.
If we go back to this password about wasteful spending, yes, we have reviewed our budget. And when some of my people are wasteful spending, I see it as an investment in the community and I have a few examples. One, I have heard, again, in a blog, that town, our town pool, we just spent, bids came in at three hundred thousand dollars for a town pool. That's if you're fixing it on one side of the ledger. There is another side of the ledger. The other side of the ledger that doesn't come up in that password is that we received a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, open space and recreation grant that cuts that expenditure in half. Plus, our township engineer renegotiated part of that contract to bring the three hundred thousand dollar grant bid down to an actual cost of one hundred and five dollars. And that was to invest in our fifty-year-old town pool, our Jenny Duckel town pool, because we talk about history and there it is. Another one is Ridgeway Park. Again, look what that has done to the St. Cloud community. That was a six hundred thousand dollar project, five hundred thousand dollar grant on the other side of the ledger, rolled that down considerably. And look what that has done to that community, to the whole town, truthfully. It has purified the area. And the balance, what one might consider wasteful spending, is that the township owns the property. So there were expenses incurred in that because our Department of Public Works had to maintain it anyway. So there were related expenses, but now the expenses are making it beautiful for the entire community to enjoy. There was another blog about a cell tower, sixty-two thousand investment in a cell tower. That's not wasteful spending, because once that is integrated with our system, we will save three thousand dollars a month. So yes, it might be an expenditure, sure, yen, fix it in on one side of the ledger. Looking at the other side of the ledger, I consider that a long-term investment that bringing revenue over the long term. Okay, here I am.
I deliberately have appointed as the independent candidate for town council. I think you've heard six other people who are aligned with other candidates. And the discussion tonight has largely been debated about those candidates. And I know that there are a lot of issues that the town must deal with and wrestle with, but I am the only one, not affiliated at the moment, forever, with a current mayor or candidate, as far as I know. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to do that, if that's, if that's something they will do. The reason I am independent is because I think the ten-point plan that I have on my, in my platform, can work. As an independent, I want more commercial development in West Orange. I want the Addison Battery Project to be resolved. I want safety to be a priority. I want taxes to be at least maintained where they are or lowered, depending on, of course, the development that we get commercially in town. I would like the opportunity that everyone has to come to this town, to be here and live here and reside here and go to school here. So all of the things that have been discussed tonight, I would like to approach as an independent candidate and not focus on whether the data that's being presented by one camp is being refuted by the other camp. I would like to take the issues, develop them, research them, vote on them, and do what's best for the citizens of West Orange. Thank you.
Mr. Cavani talked about the tax level and how is it going up twenty percent. I don't know if you realize this, that that is a reflection of property values going up. Your town, as your property values go up, then sometimes you need to pay more property taxes. If the tax level goes down, if the tax level goes down, that means we're losing property values. Isn't that a good thing for the municipality? I advocate for making wise expenditures. I'm a fiscal responsible person. That's, that's just the way, that was just the way I raised it. But I also believe in making wise investments. Over the last four years, we have been able to invest and improve our services. We just hired ninety police officers. We recently, I actually just went from assembly, promoting police officers to improve public safety. We have talked about the security cameras to deter crime in Valley Road. We have a police substation. One of our candidates talked about the increases in expenses. But he doesn't understand that what we're doing is environmental cleanup. You know, unless you're an environmental expert, you don't know what you're going to find in that soil. That was, that used to be a gas station that was there. And let me tell you something, the majority of residents in the corridor, in the Gregory section, wanted the police substation. Luna Stage, or the owners, want that property back. So that's why we decided to invest through rents and cleaning up that property that we got for one dollar and have police presence there. We talked about the town pool. It's brand money that came in and we built a little park. That was done to open, the majority of the open space was. So we really need to understand that some of these policy issues and how they come about. We're not rubber stamps. Somebody talked about rubber stamps. Now, we really look into the policy issues, make sure we make the legislation spread. Thank you.
I'm so uncomfortable that we do, anything in town is beautiful. But as you know, beauty can be in the eye of the beholder. Progress sometimes can also be in the mind of the beholder. We are not making progress. We are on the right track. But even being on the right track, you still can be hit by a train. Because you have to be moving on the right track and not just being Because you have to be moving on the right track, not just being on the right track. We are not moving. We are going backward. We need to go forward. It is saying, we talk about gravity taxes, this is the way. If you go to court, you argue that your taxes are too high. If the judge agrees with you, they reduce your taxes. But, no sooner they reduce it, than that says, "Okay, they reduce yours, I'm going to increase yours." Because they cannot lose the money. So, you will always have, taxes will always be on the increase in town until we have a new set of people to come and go and enter it. We need to move forward.
Our town is a business. West Orange is in the business of providing services to us as town residents. We need to treat this as a business. It's not for a profit business, but it needs to be a balanced budget. In regard to increasing our property values, one of the ideas that I proposed was to improve transportation to New York City. I reached out to New Jersey Transit. One of the things that's lacking at the Orange Trading Station is a secure parking lot. I myself travel into the city, the buses are really horrendous. Reached out to New Jersey Transit, New Jersey Transit has an adjacent piece of property that they're warehousing various parts. New Jersey Transit is willing to have that become a parking lot. This is a great opportunity for a public-private consortium of partnerships to build it together. One of the things a New York Times article wrote was that, "What increases property values?" And it was regarding Maplewood, it was transportation to New York City. So, we need to do that. And just for the record, I am not affiliated with any candidate, I am running independent.
Okay, so now we have time for closing remarks of each candidate. We'll have one minute, we'll start with Mr. Calhoun.
Great, thank you, thanks for everyone that came out tonight, thanks for all of the candidates. And the best thing to come out of tonight is that everyone has their own views, and we have informed voters. And the most important thing that can happen is people make an informed decision when they go to the booth on November 4th. I think when you go up on November 4th, it's a big decision. You have the opportunity to vote for, ask in our today, or you have the opportunity to vote for change. And my view of the way things are today, I love West Orange, my wife and I could have moved anywhere, but we chose to move here, this is where we're on a date. There's a lot of great things about West Orange, but without a greater move for change, we have current issues that aren't going away. We have record debt of $7 million. We have prison, which isn't changing anytime soon. We have irresponsible spending, such as bonding traffic laws. And I think if there is no change in West Orange, pretty soon the residents of St. Cloud are probably going to have a quick check in the backyard. So, I hope when it comes to time for everyone to vote for, or to vote for. Of course, I hope you understand me, you know more about me, you know my views, but I hope you vote for me, but most of all, I hope West Orange wins.
Thank you. The quick check was a real roller. I want to just respond quickly to that. Because on the planning board, there is an approved plan without variance, it's city-approved. Right now, August 21st, 2009, we approved a plan for sports, art, and career. So, that's certainly what I would prefer to be in there. Quick check, there's plenty more test run, there's study board meeting next week, October 30th. You're welcome to attend, and if you oppose the quick check, you're welcome to be there to have your opinion, your opposition. I seek reelection to the town council to continue to serve you as a fair-minded voice of reason for all West Orange residents and families and business owners. I have never in my term of the council lost sight of maintaining essential townhood services that we all enjoy while keeping taxes at or very near a 0% increase.
Thank you. Mr. Calhoun. Mr. Dr. Wilson.
I thought that was closing statements before. I grew up in this town, I've lived in three places in this town. Clint Street and Torrey Corner, the Eagle Rock Section, one Eagle Rock Avenue, which is the rectory of our Lady Glor's Parish. I served at Parish as a priest. I lived the 46 miles road for the better part of, oh, I guess, 16 years when I went away to school and become a religious brother. I then came back to seminary, it's even my university, to become a priest and became the town council of West Orange. It's been a great journey, and the journey has been great because of the great paper of West Orange. Just a couple of stories. I live next door to a family that has lived there the same amount of time that my family has lived there, 57 years. They're here tonight. Anita Strauss has been very active in politics, in the Democratic Party, in county politics, state politics. And it has been my pleasure to live next door to her because she has been the person that I have gone to to find out how to be a politician. Thank you, Anita.
Mr. Senna.
Thank you. While I'm running for reelection for town council, exactly, and I'm also a public taxpayer, just like Olivia. I also have an understanding of policy and government and its functions. I also have a proven track. I've been involved in West Orange in different services, different volunteer services over 14 years. It's what I call a proven community, someone that understands the different quarters of West Orange, the 46,000 people that we live with, our neighbors, the 59 languages that we speak. And also, I also know how to maintain a balance between being physically responsible and also making prudent investments in the community. We can't say no to everything, we have to invest in West Orange. I love West Orange just like you do. I love its beauty, I love its schools, I love the people. And I want to make sure that that body of life remains. Sometimes, government makes difficult decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. November 4th, I hope you consider me for reelection. Thank you.
Mr. Senna.
I came here this evening to listen and to learn. And I learned a lot. I learned you and I share, we are sharing the very same interests. We have the very same frustrations, and we have the very same goals. Our taxes are high, I need mine to go down, you need yours to go down. And when, if I am elected at the council, I will work very, very hard every single day to make sure that we pay less. If you feel that you don't have a voice, if you feel that nobody cares about you, there is one thing you can do, because you have the power. If you have no voice, people should have no vote. No voice, no vote. They don't listen to you, you don't vote for them. You'll vote for those who are going to listen to you. Because the more you listen, the wiser you may become. Thank you.
I want to thank, once again, the African Heritage Association, as well as thank everyone here for coming out. Why vote for me? I have a proven leadership ability, I have the ability to build consensus, I have the ability and a proven record of getting things done. And you have my promise that I will make decisions that are in the best interest of the town and not on an individual basis. So, vote, line 7, I, Berv Schwartzbaum, because it's time for experienced business leadership.
Once again, my name is Dr. Akil Khan. I want to thank the West Orange African Heritage Organization, as well as the other organizations that attempted to organize this before the man made a difference. And you, the residents of West Orange, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come before you and talk about what we're here to understand today. Two things I want to address real quick before I get to my final closing. One is that Mr. Hudson represented that he's the only independent. I would suggest you that I'm running independent. And the other thing is that this is, West Orange is not a business, West Orange is our home. Let me start by telling you a story real quick. There was a, as I walked through the township, you see that there's different places and different experiences. When I was walking through the Heights Section, maybe some of you don't know where the Heights Section is, it borders Mount Leanne Orange. Some of the residents there, who lived there 20 years, 10 years, 7 years, told me that they, I was the first person from the council ever to walk in that area to come and knock on their door. I'm here to tell you that no one was not going to happen. I actually know. Thank you.
So, now it's okay to clap. And, I'm happy to be an international presence in the West Orange African Heritage Organization. I thank the candidates and also thanking the residents for coming out this evening to the town council debate. Happy with you.